Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is hereby called to order. I am Jennifer I, the Chair of the MARTA Board of Directors. If there's anyone present tonight who needs a sign language interpreter or translator, or any other assistance, there is staff available. So if you know that you need assistance right now, just raise your hand and staff can come help you on that. This public hearing is being conducted tonight at MARTA Headquarters, 2424 Piedmont Road, Atlanta, Georgia, 30324, to consider proposed bus service modifications for MARTA's Next Gen Bus Network effective December 2025. I would like to recognize our senior MARTA staff who is with us tonight, our Chief Operational and Urban Planning, Paul Lowe, Senior Director of Government Affairs, Jennifer LaRosa, and Acting Senior Director of Public Engagement, Tony Thornton. Thank you for being here tonight, and to all of the other MARTA staff who have put this night together. We invite your comments at the public hearing on the proposed bus service modifications effective December 2025. When making the final decision on the proposal, the MARTA Board will consider comments received this evening along with any other letters received and input from other public meetings that are happening. In accordance with the MARTA Act, the MARTA Board of Directors has established rules governing public hearings, and copies of these rules have been made available to each of you. In particular, I call attention to Rule Number Two, which requires that all persons desiring to be heard must register with the official presiding over the hearing. Speakers will be heard in the order in which they register. At this time, we will hear from Ryan Van Sickle, Director of Technical Services and Service Planning, who will provide an overview of the proposed bus service modifications effective December 2025.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to begin by thanking our customers. We appreciate your time, your patronage, and your support. The Next Gen Bus Network is a generational redesign of MARTA's bus services. Through this initiative, MARTA has developed proposed service modifications to all bus routes except Routes 191, 193, 194, 195, 196, 197, 198, and 800. The following video presentation will detail the proposed changes to MARTA's fixed route bus services and will introduce proposed new on-demand services. Complementary ADA service will be adjusted to reflect the modified route alignments in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. Proposed changes would take effect in December 2025. This video presentation will last roughly one hour and 20 minutes. Bus routes will be described in numerical order, followed by on-demand service. To help attendees estimate time, the video will reach the following routes at roughly the following times. The video will begin with Route 1. After approximately 20 minutes, the video will reach Route 34. After approximately 40 minutes, the video will reach Route 87. After approximately one hour, the video will reach Route 143. And after approximately one hour and 15 minutes, the video will summarize MARTA's proposed on-demand zones. After the video is completed, we'll finish brief remarks and move into public comments. If you wish to make a comment in writing while the video is playing, for the record, you may complete a comment form in the lobby. At this time, we'll begin our video presentation.
Nearly every one of MARTA's fixed bus routes will be changed in the Next Gen Bus Network. In this section, we'll describe each individual current and proposed MARTA bus route and how it will be modified. Please note that route descriptions are generalized, so please see route maps for complete details. Proposed Route 1, Joseph E. Lowry Boulevard, 17th Street. Proposed Route 1 will operate between West End, Ashby, and Art Center stations. Buses will travel along Joseph E. Lowry Boulevard through West Midtown and along Northside Drive and 17th Street. This route will assume portions of current Routes 1 on Joseph E. Lowry Boulevard, 26 on West Marietta Street, and 94 on Northside Drive and 17th Street. Service on small portions of West Marietta Street and Marietta Boulevard will be discontinued, and portions of Marietta Boulevard will be served by Proposed Route 52. Proposed Route 1 will operate a typical frequency of every 20 minutes. Proposed Route 2, Donald Lee Hollowell Parkway, Ponce de Leon Avenue. Proposed Route 2 will operate between Edgewood-Candler Park Station, North Avenue Station, Bankhead Station, and the UPS Smart Hub on Fulton Industrial Boulevard. Buses will travel along Moreland Avenue, Ponce de Leon Avenue, North Avenue, Donald Lee Hollowell Parkway, and Fulton Industrial Boulevard. This route will assume most of current Routes 50 and 102. Proposed Route 2 will operate a typical frequency of every 10 minutes between Northside Drive and Edgewood-Candler Park Station, and every 20 minutes between Northside Drive and the UPS Smart Hub. Proposed Route 3, Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. Proposed Route 3 will operate between Five Point Station in downtown Atlanta, H.E. Holmes Station, and the Boulder Park and Collier Heights communities. Between downtown Atlanta and H.E. Holmes Station, buses will operate along Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. Buses to Boulder Park will travel primarily along Burton Road, Delmar Lane, Baker's Ferry Road, Mendel Drive, and Fairburn Road. Buses to Collier Heights will travel along Collier Drive, Fairburn Road, Bolton Road, and to the Preserve at Collier Ridge Apartments. This route will assume portions of current Routes 850 and 853 in Collier Heights, and Routes 856 and 865 in Boulder Park. Service on portions of Route 856's Cornell Boulevard, Candlelight Lane, Waits Drive, Terragon Way, and Wilson Mill Road, as well as Route 865's Dollar Mill and Plainville Circle Loops, will be discontinued. Proposed Route 3 will operate a typical frequency of every 30 minutes between Five Points and H.E. Holmes Stations, with alternating hourly service to Boulder Park and Collier Heights. Most service east of Five Point Station through Sweet Auburn will be partially assumed by the Atlanta Streetcar, and Route 7 will provide access to the Old Fourth Ward and the Helene Mills Senior Center. Proposed Route 4, Moreland Avenue. Proposed Route 4 will operate between the Inman Park-Reynolds Town Station and the Thomasville Heights area. Buses will travel along Moreland Avenue and operate through Thomasville Heights along Constitution Avenue, Jonesboro Road, Hargus Street, Forest Park Road, Thomasville Drive, and McDonough Boulevard. This route will assume most of current Route 4, through service along Valley View Road, Redford Drive, and Rebel Forest Drive, will be discontinued. Proposed Route 4 will operate a typical frequency of every 30 minutes. Proposed Route 5, Piedmont Road, Sandy Springs. Route 5's alignment will remain unchanged and will continue to operate between the Lindbergh Center and Dunwoody Stations along Piedmont Road, Roswell Road, Johnson Ferry Road, and Hammond Drive. Proposed Route 5 will operate a typical frequency of every 20 minutes. Current Route 6. Current Route 6 will be partially assumed by Proposed Route 15 along La Vista Road, Briar Cliff Road, and Clifton Road. Proposed Route 11 will assume service along North Decatur Road between Clifton Road and Briar Cliff Road, and Proposed Routes 2 and 51 will assume service on Moreland Avenue in the Little Five Points area. Service will be discontinued through the Woodland Hills area and along Briar Cliff Road south of North Decatur Road. Proposed Route 7, Boulevard, McDonough Boulevard. Proposed Route 7 will operate between Lindbergh Center, King Memorial, and West End Stations. Buses will travel along Piedmont Avenue, Monroe Drive, Boulevard, United Avenue, Custer Avenue, McDonough Boulevard, University Avenue, McDaniel Street, and Ralph David Abernathy Boulevard. This route will assume portions of Routes 9 on Boulevard, 27 on Piedmont Avenue, 155 on McDaniel Street, 809 on Monroe Drive, and 832 on United Avenue and Custer Avenue. Proposed Route 7 will operate a typical frequency of every 30 minutes. Current Route 8, North Druid Hills Road. Current Route 8 will be partially assumed by Proposed Route 17 along North Druid Hills Road between East Roxborough Road and Clermont Road, by Proposed Route 128 along North Druid Hills and Valley Brook Road, between Birch Road and East Ponce de Leon Avenue, by Proposed Route 118 along North Decatur Road, and by Route 115 through Avondale Estates. Service will be discontinued along North Druid Hills Road between the Brookhaven-Oglethorpe University Station and East Roxborough Road, as well as between Clermont Road and Birch Road, along with service in the Scottsdale area on Chapel Street, Cedar Street, and North Clarendon Avenue. Current Route 9, Boulevard, Tilson Road. Current Route 9 will be partially assumed by Proposed Route 7 on Boulevard and Custer Avenue. Service to Brannon Road and Tilson Road, along with the surrounding community, will be served by the proposed Gresham Park and Candler-McAfee-Belvedere on-demand zones. Service will be discontinued along Boulevard between Ormwood Avenue and Inglewood Avenue, as well as short portions of Eastland Road, Boulder Crest Road, and Cecilia Drive. Proposed Route 10, AUC Hollywood Road. Proposed Route 10 will operate between Five Point Station, Westlake Station, and the Almond Park and Lincoln Homes communities. Buses will travel along Peters Street, Atlanta Student Movement Boulevard, Ralph David Abernathy Boulevard, Westlake Avenue, Hollywood Road, and Bolton Road. This route will assume most of Routes 58 and 813. Proposed Route 10 will operate on a typical frequency of every 30 minutes. Proposed Route 11, DeFore Avenue, Virginia Highland. Proposed Route 11 will operate between the Cross Creek area, Midtown Station, and Executive Park areas. Buses will travel along DeFore Avenue, Northside Drive, 10th Street, Virginia Avenue, North Highland Avenue, North Decatur Road, Clifton Road, and Briar Cliff Road. This route will assume portions of Routes 6 on Clifton Road and North Decatur Road, 30 on Briar Cliff Road and through Executive Park, and it will assume most of Route 37. It will also assume parts of Route 36 on 10th Street and Virginia Avenue, as well as parts of Routes 36 and 816 on North Highland Avenue. Proposed Route 11 will operate on a typical frequency of every 30 minutes. Current Route 12, Howell Mill Road, Cumberland. Current Route 12's alignment will remain unchanged and will continue to operate along 10th Street, Howell Mill Road, Northside Parkway, and Cumberland Boulevard. Current Route 12 will operate a typical frequency of every 30 minutes. Proposed Route 14, Blantown-Hitauer Road. Proposed Route 14 will operate between Midtown Station, Moore's Mills Center, and Hamilton E. Holmes Station. Buses will travel along 10th Street, Huff Road, Chattahoochee Avenue, Marietta Boulevard, Bolton Road, Hollywood Road, Hitauer Road, and H.E. Holmes Drive. This route will assume all of Route 60. Proposed Route 14 will operate a typical frequency of every 30 minutes. Proposed Route 15, Clifton Road, Candler Road. Proposed Route 15 will operate between Lindbergh Center Station, Decatur Station, and the Georgia State University Perimeter College Decatur Campus. Buses will travel along La Vista Road, Briar Cliff Road, Clifton Road, North Decatur Road, Clermont Road, Candler Road, and Panthersville Road. This route will assume portions of current Routes 6 on Clifton Road and La Vista Road, 15 on Candler Road, 19 on Clermont Road, and 36 on North Decatur Road. Proposed Route 15 will operate a typical frequency of every 15 minutes. Proposed Route 17, Clermont Road, North Druid Hills Road. Proposed Route 17 will operate between Avondale Station and Lenox Station. Buses will travel along Lenox Park Boulevard, North Druid Hills Road, and Clermont Road, including a stop at the VA Hospital. This route will assume portions of current Route 19 on Clermont Road and current Route 8 on North Druid Hills Road. Proposed Route 17 will operate a typical frequency of 30 minutes. Current Route 19, Clermont Road, Howard Avenue. Current Route 19 will be partially assumed by Proposed Routes 15 and 17 along Clermont Road north of Decatur, and by Proposed Route 48 between Dresden Drive and Shambly Station. In addition, Proposed Route 46 will provide access to the area around 85 and Briar Cliff Road. Access to the VA Hospital on Clermont Road will be provided by Route 17. Service will be discontinued between Decatur and Eastlake Stations, on Clermont Road between North Druid Hills Road and Briar Cliff Road, and on Clermont Road between Century Boulevard and Dresden Drive. Proposed Route 20, South DeKalb, Downtown Atlanta. Proposed Route 20 will operate between Five Point Station and New Snapfinger Woods Drive at Wesley Chapel Road. Buses will travel along I-20, Rainbow Drive, and Wesley Chapel Road. This route will assume most of current Route 186. Proposed Route 20 will operate a typical frequency of 15 minutes between Five Point Station and the Gallery at South DeKalb, and every 30 minutes between the Gallery at South DeKalb and New Snapfinger Woods Drive. Proposed Route 21, Memorial Drive Inside the Perimeter. Proposed Route 21 will operate between Five Point Station and Kensington Station. Buses will travel along Memorial Drive, Bill Kennedy Way, Glenwood Avenue, and Maynard Terrace. Service on Memorial Drive between Moreland Avenue and Maynard Terrace will be provided by the Kirkwood-Candler Park on-demand zone. In addition, Proposed Routes 4, 32, and 74 will provide service to the intersection of Memorial Drive and Moreland Avenue. Service on Memorial Drive between Bill Kennedy Way and Maynard Terrace will be discontinued. Proposed Route 21 will operate a typical frequency of 30 minutes, and schedules will be coordinated with Proposed Route 22 to provide 15-minute frequencies between Maynard Terrace and Five Point Station. Proposed Route 22, Glenwood. Proposed Route 22 will operate between Five Point Station and Indian Creek Station. Buses will travel along Memorial Drive, Bill Kennedy Way, Glenwood Avenue, Glenwood Road, and South Indian Creek Road. This route will assume the Glenwood Avenue and Glenwood Road service currently provided by Route 107, as well as the South Indian Creek Drive service currently provided by Route 24. Service on Covington Highway west of South Indian Creek Drive will continue to be provided by Route 115. Proposed Route 22 will operate on a typical frequency of 30 minutes. Proposed Route 23, Peachtree Road, Buckhead. Proposed Route 23 will operate between Art Center Station and Brookhaven-Oglethorpe Station, with alternating trips to Shambly Station. Buses will travel along Peachtree Road with alternating trips along Peachtree Boulevard. This route will assume all of current Route 110, as well as portions of current Route 25 between Brookhaven and Shambly. Proposed Route 23 will operate a typical frequency of 20 minutes between Art Center Station and Brookhaven-Oglethorpe Station, and every 40 minutes between Brookhaven-Oglethorpe Station and Shambly Station. Current Route 24, McAfee-Josea Williams. Current Route 24 will be partially assumed by Proposed Routes 22 on Glenwood Road and South Indian Creek Road, and 34 on Eva Davis Way. Service to the Kirkwood area will be provided by the Ponce de Leon-Kirkwood on-demand zone, and service to McAfee Road and the surrounding community will be provided by the Kirkwood-Candler Park and Candler-McAfee-Belvedere on-demand zones. Service on Austin Drive will be discontinued. Current Route 25, Peachtree Boulevard. Current Route 25 will be assumed by Proposed Routes 23 and 132 on Peachtree Boulevard, and Proposed Route 88 on Motors Industrial Way. Proposed Route 26, James Jackson Parkway, Perry Boulevard. Proposed Route 26 will operate between Bankhead Station and H.E. Holmes Station. Buses will travel along Marietta Boulevard, Perry Boulevard, through the Carver Hills area, Bolton Road, James Jackson Parkway, and H.E. Holmes Drive. Buses will alternate trips between James Jackson Parkway and Northwest Drive. This route will assume the entirety of Route 153. Service will be discontinued on the portion of current Route 26 between Marietta Boulevard and Five Point Station. Current Route 27, Cheshire Bridge Road. Current Route 27 will be partially assumed by Proposed Route 7 on Piedmont Avenue Northeast between Ansley Mall and Cheshire Bridge Road. Service will be discontinued along 14th Street, Piedmont Avenue between Ansley Mall and 14th Street, Monroe Drive between Ansley Mall and Piedmont Avenue, Cheshire Bridge Road, and Lenox Road. Current Route 30, La Vista Road. Current Route 30 will be partially assumed by Proposed Route 39 between Lindbergh Center Station and Lenox Road. In addition, Proposed Route 11 will provide service to the Executive Park area. Proposed Route 17 will provide service to the Tocco Hills area and Briar Cliff Road, and Proposed Routes 75 and 125 will provide service to the North Lake area. Service will be discontinued along Chantilly Drive, as well as on La Vista Road between North Druid Hills Road and Montreal Road. Proposed Route 32, Boulder Crest Road. Proposed Route 32 will operate between Inman Park-Reynolds Town Station and Linecrest Road. Buses will travel along Moreland Avenue, Flat Shoals Road, Boulder Crest Road, and River Road. Service on Boulder Crest Road south of Panthersville Road, Anvil Block Road, and South Park Boulevard will be assumed by Proposed Route 74. Service along Boulder Crest Road between River Road and Panthersville Road and to the surrounding community will be provided by the proposed Cedar Grove on-demand zone. Proposed Route 32 will operate a typical frequency of every 40 minutes, though buses will be coordinated with Proposed Route 74 to provide a 20-minute frequency between the Blue Line and East Atlanta Village. Proposed Route 34, Second Avenue, Clifton Springs Road. Proposed Route 34 will operate between Eastlake Station and the Gallery at South DeKalb. Buses will travel along Second Avenue, Eva Davis Way, Gresham Road, Clifton Springs Road, Panthersville Road, and Candler Road. Service to other streets in the Gresham Park community will be provided by the proposed Gresham Park on-demand zone, and service to the Georgia State University Perimeter College Decatur Campus will be provided by Proposed Routes 15 and 74. Current Route 36, North Decatur Road, Virginia Highland. Current Route 36 will be partially assumed by Proposed Route 11 along 10th Street, Virginia Avenue, and North Decatur Road between Midtown Station and Clifton Road. Service on North Decatur Road between Clifton Road and Clermont Road will be assumed by Proposed Route 15, and Church Street between North Decatur Road and Decatur Station will be assumed by Proposed Routes 75 and 118. Service will be discontinued on North Decatur Road between Clermont Road and Church Street. Current Route 37, DeForest Ferry Road. Current Route 37 will be mostly assumed by Proposed Route 11 between DeForest Ferry Road and Hills Avenue and Atlantic Station. Service along 17th Street and to Art Center Station will be assumed by Proposed Route 1. Service on DeForest Ferry Road between Hills Avenue and Moore's Mills Center will be discontinued. Proposed Route 39, Buford Highway. Proposed Route 39's alignment will remain unchanged and will continue to operate between Lindbergh Center Station and Doraville Station along Buford Highway. Proposed Route 39 will operate a typical frequency of every 15 minutes. Current Route 40, Peachtree Street Downtown. Current Route 40 will be discontinued. Proposed Route 42 will assume service on McDaniel Street, and Proposed Route 49 will assume service on Peachtree Street between Ralph McGill Boulevard and North Avenue Station, serving Emory Midtown Hospital. Peachtree Street remains accessible using MARTA's rail system at the Five Points, Peachtree Center, Civic Center, North Avenue, Midtown, and Art Center Stations. In addition, access to Peachtree Street will be provided by Routes operating to Five Points, as well as Routes 51 on Ivan Allen Jr. Boulevard, 2 on North Avenue, 11 on 10th Street, 23 at Art Center Station, and the Atlanta Streetcar Downtown. Service Service will be discontinued on Whitehall Street. Proposed Route 42, McDaniel Street-Pryor Road. Proposed Route 42 will operate between Five Points and Lakewood-Fort McPherson Station. Buses will travel along Windsor Street, McDaniel Street, Ralph David Abernathy Boulevard, Pryor Street, Lakewood Way, and Arthur B. Langford Parkway. This route will assume portions of current Routes 40 on McDaniel Street. Service on Pryor Street and Shirley C. Franklin Boulevard will be assumed by Route 55. Service along Arthur Langford Jr. Place, Maury Avenue, Melden Avenue, Amal Drive, and Ashwood Avenue, along with the surrounding community, will be served by the Proposed Lakewood On-Demand Zone. Sylvan Road will be served by Proposed Route 79, and service along Astor Avenue will be discontinued. Proposed Route 42 will operate a typical frequency of every 30 minutes. Proposed Route 46, I-85 Access Road-Briarwood. Proposed Route 46 will operate between Brookhaven-Oglethorpe Station and a loop along the I-85 Access Roads. Buses will travel along North Druid Hills Road, Briarwood Road, I-85 Access Road southbound, Briar Cliff Road, I-85 Access Road northbound, Century Boulevard, and Clermont Road. This route will assume portions of Route 47 along Briarwood Road and the I-85 Access Roads in the vicinity between Century Center and the Children’s Healthcare of Atlanta Campus. Proposed Route 46 will operate a typical frequency of 40 minutes. Current Route 47, I-85 Access Road. Current Route 47 will be mostly assumed by Proposed Routes 46 and 48 along Briarwood Road and the I-85 Access Roads. Service along Shambly-Tucker between I-85 and Shambly will be assumed by Proposed Route 125. Proposed Route 48, I-85 Access Road-North Brookhaven. Proposed Route 48 will operate between Dunwoody Station and the I-85 Access Road. Buses will travel along Ashford-Dunwoody Road, Johnson Ferry Road, Clermont Road, Plaster Road, and the I-85 Access Roads. This route will assume portions of current Route 825 along Johnson Ferry Road, Route 19 along Clermont Road, and current Route 47 along the I-85 Access Roads. Proposed Route 48 will operate on a typical frequency of 60 minutes. Proposed Route 49, McDonough Boulevard-Hill Street. Proposed Route 49 will operate between North Avenue Station and the Metro Transitional Center. Buses will travel along Peachtree Street with service to Emory Midtown Hospital, Piedmont Avenue, Cortlandt Street, Jesse Hill Jr. Drive, Hill Street, Inglewood Avenue, Boulevard, McDonough Boulevard, Moreland Avenue, and Constitution Road. This route will assume service along Peachtree Street from Route 40 between Ralph McGill Boulevard and North Avenue. Portions of Ted Turner Drive, Windsor Street, and Ralph David Abernathy Boulevard will instead be served by Proposed Route 42, while service on Pollard Boulevard, Ormond Street, and Atlanta Avenue will be discontinued. Proposed Route 49 will operate a typical frequency of 20 minutes. Current Route 50, Donald Lee-Hollowell Parkway. Current Route 50 will be mostly assumed by Proposed Route 2, which will provide service along Fulton Industrial Boulevard to the UPS Smart Hub, and along Donald Lee-Hollowell Parkway and North Avenue. Service will be discontinued along Fox Street, English Avenue, and Cameron-Madison-Alexander Boulevard. Proposed Route 51, Joseph E. Boone Boulevard-Ralph McGill Boulevard. Proposed Route 51 will operate between H.E. Holmes and Inman Park-Reynolds Town Stations. Buses will travel along H.E. Holmes Drive and Joseph E. Boone Boulevard, assuming most of current Route 51. Proposed Route 51 will also assume service from current Route 816 along Ralph McGill Boulevard, Freedom Parkway, then assuming part of Route 6 through Little Five Points along Moreland Avenue. Service along Centennial Olympic Park Drive and Lucky Street will be discontinued, and service to North Avenue Station will be provided by Proposed Route 2. Proposed Route 52, Marietta Road. Proposed Route 52 will operate between Bankhead Station and Moores Mill Center, assuming part of current Route 1. Buses will travel along Marietta Boulevard, Carroll Drive, Marietta Road, and Bolton Road. Proposed Route 52 will operate a typical frequency of 60 minutes. Proposed Route 55, Jonesboro Road. Proposed Route 55 will operate between Five Points and Downtown Forest Park. Buses will travel along Central Avenue, Pryor Street, Lakewood Avenue, Jonesboro Road, Hutchins Road, and Forest Park Road. The route will assume portions of current Route 42 on Pryor Street and Central Avenue, and current Route 155 on Milton and Lakewood Avenue. Service along Hank Aaron Drive and McDonough Boulevard will be provided by the Rapid A-line and Proposed Route 7. The segment along Jonesboro Road, Browns Mill Road, and McWilliams Road will be served by the Lakewood On-Demand Zone. Proposed Route 55 will operate a typical frequency of 30 minutes. Current Route 58, Hollywood Road-Lucille Avenue. Current Route 58 will mostly be assumed by Proposed Route 10, which will provide service along Hollywood Road, Westlake Drive, and Ralph David Abernathy Boulevard. Service along Lucille Avenue will be discontinued. Current Route 60, High Tower Road. Current Route 60 will be assumed by Proposed Route 14, which will operate between H.E. Holmes Station and Moores Mill Center. Proposed Route 66, Brownlee Road-Harbin Road. Proposed Route 66 will operate between H.E. Holmes Station and the Barge Road Park-and-Ride. Buses will travel along Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, Brownlee Road, Lynn Hurst Drive, Harbin Road, Childress Drive, Mount Gilliard Road, Greenbrier Parkway, and Barge Road. The route will assume portions of Route 68 on Brownlee Road and Lynn Hurst Drive. Proposed Route 165 will assume Stone Road, Fairburn Road, Camp Creek Parkway, and Princeton Lakes Parkway, and service along Center Parkway will be assumed by Proposed Route 84. Service will be discontinued along Lynn Hurst Drive between Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and Benjamin E. Mayes Drive, as well as Meadow Lane Drive and Dale Lane. Proposed Route 66 will operate a typical frequency of 60 minutes. Proposed Route 67, Peyton Place. Proposed Route 67 will operate from H.E. Holmes Station along Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, Harland Road, Peyton Road, and Peyton Place, assuming portions of Route 867. Proposed Route 67 will operate a typical frequency of every 60 minutes. Proposed Route 68, Donnelly Avenue-Beacher. Proposed Route 68 will operate from West End Station to Cascade Heights. Buses will travel along Lee Street, Donnelly Avenue, Westwood Avenue, Beacher Street, and Beacher Road. Service along Martin Luther King Jr. Drive through the London Townhomes and on Brownlee Road will be assumed by Proposed Route 66. Service on most of Benjamin E. Mayes will be discontinued. Proposed Route 68 will operate a typical frequency of every 60 minutes. Proposed Route 71, Cascade Road. Proposed Route 71’s alignment will remain unchanged, except for a small extension to the vicinity of Fulton Industrial Boulevard and Boat Rock Road. Proposed Route 71 will operate a typical frequency of every 20 minutes between West End and Kimberly Road, every 40 minutes along Kimberly Road, and every 60 minutes to Fulton Industrial Boulevard and Boat Rock Road. Proposed Route 73, Fulton Industrial Boulevard. Proposed Route 73 will operate between H.E. Holmes Station and Boat Rock Road. Buses will travel along Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, Wendell Drive, Fulton Industrial Boulevard, La Grange Boulevard, Boat Rock Road, and Baker’s Ferry Road. Service will be discontinued along West Park Drive and the portion of Wendell Drive west of Fulton Industrial Boulevard. Proposed Route 73 will operate a typical frequency of 15 minutes. Proposed Route 74, Flat Shoals Road. Proposed Route 74 will operate between Inman Park-Reynolds Town Station, the Gallery at South Decab, and South Park Boulevard in Clayton County. Buses will travel along South Park Boulevard, Boulder Crest Road, Panthersville Road, Flat Shoals Road, Whites Mill Road, and Moreland Avenue. This route will assume portions of Routes 15 on Panthersville Road and 32 on Boulder Crest Road. Current service along Battle Forest Drive and Bull Run Drive, as well as to the surrounding community, will be provided by the Proposed Gresham Road On-Demand Zone. Proposed Route 74 will operate a typical frequency of every 40 minutes, though buses will be coordinated with Proposed Route 32 to provide a 20-minute frequency between the Blue Line and East Atlanta Village. Proposed Route 75, Lawrenceville Highway. Proposed Route 75 will operate between Avondale Station and the Goldsmith Park-and-Ride. Buses will travel along Lawrenceville Highway, Montreal Road, North Lake Parkway, and Mountain Industrial Boulevard. This route will assume portions of Montreal Road and Henderson Mill Road, currently served by Route 125. It will also assume a portion of Mountain Industrial Boulevard, currently served by Route 121. In addition, it will assume portions of Routes 36 and 123 on Church Street. Service on Lawrenceville Highway between Montreal Road and another Montreal Road in the vicinity of 285 will be discontinued, as well as along North Royal Atlanta Drive and Tuckerstone Parkway. Proposed Route 75 will operate a typical frequency of 30 minutes, though schedules will be coordinated with Route 118 to provide 15-minute frequency on Church Street. Proposed Route 78, Cleveland Avenue. Proposed Route 78’s alignment will remain unchanged and continue to operate from East Point Station to Cleveland Avenue and Jonesboro Road, along Irene Kidd Parkway, Cleveland Avenue, Browns Mill Road, and McWilliams Road. Proposed Route 78 will operate a typical frequency of every 15 minutes. Proposed Route 79, Sylvan Road-Hapewell. Proposed Route 79 will operate between Oakland City Station and Hapewell along Sylvan Road, Springdale Road, North Central Avenue, Sunset Avenue, and King Arnold Street. This route will assume portions of Route 172 on Sylvan Road, and Route 95 on North Central Avenue, Sunset Drive, and King Arnold Street. Service will be discontinued on Sylvan Road between Glenway Drive and Lakewood Avenue, as well as on parts of Calhoun Avenue, Maria Head Terrace, and a portion of Norman Berry Drive. However, service to the East Point Housing Authority in this area will be provided by Route 192. Proposed Route 79 will operate a typical frequency of 30 minutes. Proposed Route 80, Hedland Drive-Sandtown. Proposed Route 80 will operate between East Point Station, the Barge Road Park-and-Ride, and an end-of-line loop along Baker’s Ferry Road and Boat Rock Road. Buses will travel along Hedland Drive, Greenbrier Parkway, Campbellton Road, and Fulton Industrial Boulevard, Baker’s Ferry Road, Boat Rock Road, and La Grange Boulevard. Current service along Hedland Drive will be assumed from current Routes 81 and 93. Proposed Route 80 will operate a typical frequency of 60 minutes. Proposed Route 81, Venetian Hills. Proposed Route 81 will operate between West End Station and East Point Station. Buses will travel along Oglethorpe Avenue, Avon Avenue, Venetian Drive, Delo Drive, Allison Court, Stanton Road, and Connolly Drive. This route will assume portions of current Route 93 on Stanton Road, Connolly Drive, and in downtown East Point. Service on Hedland Drive will be provided by Route 80, and service south of Hedland Drive will instead be served by the East Point On-Demand Zone. Service on Sandtown Road, West Ridge Road, and Delo Drive south of Allison Court will be discontinued. Proposed Route 81 will operate a typical frequency of 40 minutes. Current Route 82, Camp Creek-South Fulton Parkway. Current Route 82 will be partially assumed by Proposed Route 165 between College Park Station and Princeton Lakes Parkway, and by Proposed Route 182 on South Fulton Parkway and Derrick Industrial Drive. Service will be discontinued along Welcome All Road. Proposed Route 83, Campbellton Road. Proposed Route 83’s alignment will remain unchanged and will continue to operate between Oakland City Station and the Barge Road Park-and-Ride along Campbellton Road, Greenbrier Parkway, and Barge Road. Proposed Route 83 will operate a typical frequency of 15 minutes. Proposed Route 84, Washington Road-Camp Creek Marketplace. Proposed Route 84 will operate between East Point Station and Camp Creek Marketplace. Buses will travel along Washington Road, North Commerce Drive, Center Parkway, and Princeton Lakes Parkway. Stone Road and a small portion of Mount Olive Road will instead be served by the East Point On-Demand Zone. The remainder of service on Mount Olive Road will be discontinued. Proposed Route 84 will operate a typical frequency of 15 minutes. Proposed Route 85, Roswell. Proposed Route 85 will operate between North Spring Station and the Mansell Park-and-Ride. Buses will travel along Georgia 400, Dunwoody Place, Atlanta Street, Alpharetta Highway, East Crossville Road, and Mansell Road. Service on Alpharetta Highway between East Crossville Road and Mansell Road will be discontinued. Proposed Route 85 will operate a typical frequency of 40 minutes. Current Route 86, Farrington Road. Current Route 86 will be partially assumed by Proposed Routes 109 on Midway Row and Peach Crest Road, 114 on Columbia Drive, Snap Finger Road, Snap Finger Woods Road, Farrington Road, Hillendale Drive east of Emory-Hillendale Hospital, and Mall Parkway to Stonecrest Mall. Service will be discontinued along Old Hillendale Drive and the I-20 Access Road, Manola Drive, and Miller Road. Proposed Route 87, Roswell Road-Dunwoody. Proposed Route 87 will operate between the Dunwoody Medical Center and North Spring Stations. Buses will travel along Peachtree-Dunwoody Road, Glenridge Drive, Roswell Road, Dunwoody Place, and Georgia 400. This route will assume most of current Route 87. Service on a portion of Hammond Drive between Glenridge Road and Roswell Road will be discontinued. Proposed Route 87 will operate a typical frequency of 30 minutes. Proposed Route 88, Dunwoody Village-Georgetown. Proposed Route 88 will operate between Doraville Station, Dunwoody Village, and Dunwoody Station. Buses will travel along Motors Industrial Way, Peachtree Boulevard, North Shallowford Road around Dunwoody Village, Shambly-Dunwoody Road, Perimeter-Center Place, and Ashford-Dunwoody Road. This route will assume portions of the current Routes 25, 103, and 150, while also providing new service along Shambly-Dunwoody Road. Service along portions of Peeler Road and Mount Vernon Road will be discontinued. Proposed Route 88 will operate a typical frequency of 60 minutes. Proposed Route 89, Old National Highway. Proposed Route 89 will operate between College Park Station and Union City or the Riverdale Park-and-Ride. Buses will travel along Old National Highway, with half of all trips continuing on to Riverdale via Jonesboro Road, 85, and Lamar-Hutchison Parkway. Other trips will travel along Flat Shoals Parkway, then turn onto either Oakley Road or Shannon Parkway, reuniting south of Mall Boulevard. Along with assuming most of the current Route 89, the proposed route will also assume portions of the current Routes 181 and 189. Proposed Route 187 will assume service on Sullivan Road. Service will be discontinued on Jonesboro Road between Old National Highway and Beth Seda Road. Proposed Route 89 will operate with a typical trunk frequency of 15 minutes on Old National Highway north of Flat Shoals Parkway, and every 30 minutes to Union City or Riverdale. Current Route 93, Hedland Drive-Main Street. Current Route 93 will be partially assumed by Proposed Routes 80 along Hedland Road, 81 along Stanton Road, and 160- 81 along Stanton Road, and 165 along Continental Colony Parkway. Service along Delo Drive, as well as the surrounding community, will be provided by the East Point On-Demand Zone. Service will be discontinued along Main Street, the Stanton-Delo Connector, Delo Drive south of Arthur Langford Parkway, and along North Camp Creek Parkway to the Royal Oaks Apartments. Current Route 94, Northside Drive. Current Route 94 will be partially assumed by Proposed Route 1 along Seventeenth Street and Northside Drive, north of Tenth Street. Service will be discontinued on Northside Drive between Tenth Street and Weston Station, though connections to Northside will be available on other routes at North Avenue, Joseph E. Boone Boulevard, Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, and Fair Street. Proposed Route 95, Metropolitan Parkway. Proposed Route 95 will operate between West End Station and Sylvan Road. Buses will travel along Ralph David Abernathy Boulevard, Metropolitan Parkway, and Cleveland Avenue. The proposed route will assume most of the current Route 95. Service along Dogwood Drive will be assumed by Proposed Route 96, while service on Central Avenue and King Arnold Street will be assumed by Proposed Route 79. Proposed Route 95 will operate with a typical frequency of fifteen minutes. Proposed Route 96, Dogwood Drive, Virginia Avenue. Proposed Route 96 will operate between Lakewood Fort McPherson Station, Hapeville, and College Park Station. Buses will travel along Laneford Parkway, Metropolitan Parkway, Dogwood Drive, Virginia Avenue, Princeton Drive, and Main Street. The proposed route will take on portions of current Routes 95 and 172. Proposed Route 96 will operate with a typical frequency of twenty minutes. Current Route 102, North Avenue, Little Five Points. Most of current Route 102, including service along Moreland Avenue, Freedom Parkway, Ponce de Leon Avenue, and North Avenue, will be assumed by Proposed Route 2. Service through the Edgewood Retail District and Caroline Street, Marion Place, and La France Street will be provided by the Kirkwood Candler Park On-Demand Zone. Current Route 103, Peeler Road. Most of current Route 103 will be assumed by Proposed Routes 88 on North Shallowford Road and 132 on Peachtree Boulevard, as well as on North Peachtree Road. Service on Peeler Road will be discontinued. Proposed Route 104, Winters Chapel Road. Proposed Route 104 will operate between Doraville Station and an end-of-line loop along Jet Ferry Road, Dunwoody Club Drive, and Mount Vernon Road. Buses will travel along New Peachtree Road, Winters Chapel Road, Peachtree Industrial Boulevard, Peeler Road, and Tilly Mill Road. The proposed route will take on most of the current Route 104 and portions of the current Routes 103 on Peeler Road and 132 on Tilly Mill Road. Service will be discontinued along Woodwind Road and portions of Tilly Mill Road, south of Peeler Road. Proposed Route 104 will operate with a typical frequency of forty minutes. Current Route 107, Glenwood. Current Route 107 will be almost entirely assumed by Proposed Route 22. Proposed Route 49 will assume service to Grady Hospital. Service along 285 will be discontinued. Proposed Route 109, Peach Crest Road, Columbia Drive. Proposed Route 109 will operate between Kensington Station and the Gallery at South DeKalb. Buses will travel along Peach Crest Road, Columbia Drive, Clifton Springs Road, Panthersville Road, and Candler Road. Return trips will use Covington Drive and Memorial Drive. The proposed route will take on portions of the current Routes 86 on Peach Crest Road and 114 on Columbia Drive and Clifton Springs Road. Proposed Route 109 will operate with a typical frequency of thirty minutes. Current Route 110. Current Route 110 will be entirely assumed by Proposed Route 23. Proposed Route 111, South Hairston Road, Wesley Chapel Road. Proposed Route 111 will operate between Indian Creek Station and the Gallery at South DeKalb. Buses will travel along Redan Road, South Hairston Road, Wesley Chapel Road, and Flat Shoals Parkway. This route will assume the East Side Drive Loop from current Route 186. Current service on New Snap Finger Woods Drive, along with Hillendale Drive between Emory Hillendale Hospital and Covington Highway, will be assumed by Proposed Route 114. Service on Hillendale Drive between Panola Road and the Hospital, as well as to Alice Williams Towers, will be provided by the Proposed Hillendale On-Demand Zone. Service along Covington Highway to Walmart and to Stonecrest Mall will be assumed by Route 115. Proposed Route 111 will operate a typical frequency of forty minutes. Proposed Route 114, Columbia Drive, Snap Finger Woods Drive. Proposed Route 114 will operate between Decatur Station, the Panola Park and Ride, Emory Hillendale Hospital, and the Mall at Stonecrest. Buses will travel along Columbia Drive, Snap Finger Road, Snap Finger Woods Drive, Panola Road, Farrington Road, Farrington Parkway, Hillendale Drive, Chupp Road, Evans Mill Road, and Mall Parkway. This route will assume substantial portions of current Routes 86 and 111 from Snap Finger Road eastward. Service on Columbia Drive and Clifton Springs Road south of Snap Finger Road will be assumed by Proposed Route 109. Proposed Route 114 will operate a typical frequency of thirty minutes. Proposed Route 115, Covington Highway. Proposed Route 115 will operate between Avondale Station and the Mall at Stonecrest. Buses will travel along North Avondale Road, Covington Road, Covington Highway, and Mall Parkway. This route will assume portions of North Avondale Road from Route 8, as well as the Stonecrest Parkway and Mall Parkway segments from Route 111. Service on Covington Highway between its intersections with Red Wing Circle will be discontinued. Proposed Route 115 will operate a typical frequency of twenty minutes. Proposed Route 116, Redan Road. Proposed Route 116 will operate between Kensington Station, Indian Creek Station, and the Mall at Stonecrest. Buses will travel along Kensington Road, Redan Road, Stone Mountain Lithonia Road, Evans Mill Road, and Mall Parkway. This route will assume portions of Kensington Road and Holcombe Road, which also will be served by Route 119. Proposed Route 116 will operate a typical frequency of thirty minutes, though it will be combined with Route 119 to provide fifteen-minute service on Redan Road between Kensington and South Hairston Road. Proposed Route 117, Stone Mountain, Panola Road. Proposed Route 117 will operate between the Goldsmith Park and Ride and Farrington Parkway. Buses will travel along West Mountain Street, Main Street, South Stone Mountain Lithonia Road, Panola Road, and Farrington Parkway. Service along Win Way between North Arcadia Avenue and Rufus Evans Drive will be assumed by Route 127. Service along the North Decatur Road and Rock Bridge Road segments will be assumed by Route 118. Service will be discontinued along Panola Road, south of Manola Drive, West Farrington Parkway, west of Walmart Drive, and the portion of Rock Bridge Road between North Indian Creek Drive and Memorial Drive. Proposed Route 117 will operate a typical frequency of thirty minutes. Proposed Route 118, Rock Bridge Road. Proposed Route 118 will operate between Avondale Station, Decatur, and Juliette Road. Buses will travel along Church Street, North Decatur Road, Rock Bridge Road, Main Street, and East Ponce de Leon Avenue. This route will assume portions of current Routes 36 and 123 on Church Street, of Routes 8 and 117 on North Decatur Road, 117 on Rock Bridge Road, and Route 119 along East Ponce de Leon and Main Street. Proposed Route 118 will operate a typical frequency of thirty minutes, though it will be combined with Proposed Route 75 to provide fifteen-minute service on Church Street. Proposed Route 119, Hairston Road. Proposed Route 119 will operate between Kensington Station, Indian Creek Station, and the Goldsmith Park and Ride. Buses will travel along Kensington Road, Redan Road, South and North Hairston Roads, and Central Drive. Current service will be assumed by Route 117 on West Mountain Street and by Route 118 on Main Street and East Ponce de Leon Avenue. Proposed Route 119 will operate a typical frequency of thirty minutes, though it will be combined with Route 116 to provide fifteen-minute service on Redan Road between Kensington and South Hairston Road. Proposed Route 120, East Ponce de Leon Avenue. Proposed Route 120 will operate between Decatur Station, Avondale Station, and Juliette Road. Buses will travel along East Ponce de Leon Avenue. Proposed Route 120 will operate a typical frequency of thirty minutes. Proposed Route 121, Memorial Drive outside the perimeter, Pleasant Dale. Proposed Route 121 will operate between Kensington Station and the Goldsmith Park and Ride or Doraville Station. Buses will travel along Memorial Drive, North Hairston Road, Central Drive, Idlewood Road, through Central Tucker, along Pleasant Dale Road, Oak Cliff Road, and Beaufort Highway. Alternating buses will serve the Goldsmith Park and Ride or continue to Doraville. This route will assume most of current Route 124, and Route 75 will assume service along Mountain Industrial Boulevard north of Greer Circle. Service will be discontinued along Fellowship Road, South Royal Atlanta Drive, North Royal Atlanta Drive, Hugh Howell Road, Flintstone Drive, and Granite Drive. Proposed Route 121 will operate a typical frequency of fifteen minutes along Memorial Drive and thirty minutes between Memorial Drive and Doraville. Current Route 123, Church Street. Current Route 123 will be partially assumed by Proposed Route 75 on Church Street and Lawrenceville Highway. In addition, Proposed Route 128 will serve DeKalb Industrial Way and the Lula Hills Development, and Route 127 will serve Emory Decatur Hospital. Current Route 124, Pleasant Dale Road. Current Route 124 will be mostly assumed by Proposed Route 121. Service will be discontinued along Fellowship Drive. Proposed Route 125, Clarkston, Embry Hills. Proposed Route 125 will operate between Kensington Station and Shambly Station. Buses will travel along Northern Avenue, North Indian Creek Drive, Lawrenceville Highway, North Lake Parkway, Park Lake Drive, Henderson Mill Road, Shambly Tucker Road, and Shambly Dunwoody Road. This route will assume portions of Route 126 along Park Lake Drive, Henderson Mill Road, and Shambly Tucker Road. It will also assume a portion of Shambly Dunwoody Road from Route 47. Service along Lawrenceville Highway, as well as Montreal Road between Lawrenceville Highway and La Vista Road will be provided by Route 75. Proposed Route 125 will operate a typical frequency of every thirty minutes. Current Route 126, Embry Hills. Current Route 126 will be mostly assumed by Proposed Route 125. Service will be discontinued along Flowers Road and Brandywine Road. Proposed Route 127, Win Way. Proposed Route 127 will operate between Avondale Station and Emory Decatur Hospital. Buses will travel along North Arcadia Avenue and Win Way. This route will assume portions of Route 117 along North Arcadia Avenue and Win Way, as well as service to Emory Decatur Hospital provided by Route 123. The segment of Sycamore Drive between Rufus Evans Drive and Church Street, as well as Wash-Lively Circle between Rufus Evans Drive and North Decatur Road, will be discontinued. Proposed Route 127 will operate a typical frequency of sixty minutes. Proposed Route 128, Valley Brook Road. Proposed Route 128 will operate between Avondale Station and Lula Hills, formerly North DeKalb Mall. Buses will travel along DeKalb Industrial Way, Lawrenceville Highway, Valley Brook Road, and North Decatur Road. This route will assume portions of Route 75 along DeKalb Industrial Way, Route 123 at Lula Hills, and Route 8 along Valley Brook Road. Proposed Route 128 will operate a typical frequency of sixty minutes. Proposed Route 132, Tilly Mill Road. Proposed Route 132 will operate between Shambly Station and Dunwoody Club Drive. Buses will travel along Shambly Tucker Road, Peachtree Boulevard, North Peachtree Road, Tilly Mill Road, and Mount Vernon Road. This route will assume portions of current Routes 25 and 103 on Peachtree Boulevard. Service on Peachtree Road and North Peachtree Road between Shambly Station and Peachtree Boulevard will be discontinued. Proposed Route 132 will operate a typical frequency of sixty minutes. Current Route 133, Shallowford Road. Current Route 133 and its service along Shallowford Road and Briar Cliff Road will be discontinued. Proposed Route 48 will provide service to the I-85 access roads, and Route 75 and 125 will provide service to the North Lake area. Proposed Route 140, North Point Parkway. Proposed Route 140 will operate between North Spring Station, the Winward Park and Ride, with alternating trips continuing on to the Georgia State Alpharetta Center or Deerfield Play Shopping Center. Buses will travel along Georgia 400, North Point Parkway, West Side Parkway, Old Milton Parkway, Morris Road, Webb Road, Deerfield Parkway, and Alpharetta Highway. This route will assume portions of current Route 141 on Haynesbridge Road, Alpharetta Highway by Walmart, and Deerfield Parkway. It will also assume Morris Road from current Route 143 and Old Milton Parkway from current Route 185. Proposed Route 140 will operate a typical frequency of twenty minutes between North Spring Station and the Winward Park and Ride, with alternating trips operating a typical frequency of forty minutes. Current Route 141, Haynesbridge Road, Milton. Current Route 141 will be mostly assumed by Proposed Route 140. Service along North Main Street will be assumed by Proposed Route 185. Service will be discontinued on Haynesbridge Road between West Side Parkway and Academy Street, and a short segment of Highway 9 between Winward Parkway and Webb Road. Current Route 142, East Holcombe Bridge Road. Current Route 142 will be discontinued. Service in the vicinity of the Mansell Road Park and Ride, Georgia 400, and the Kings Market Shopping Center will remain available on Routes 85, 185, and the North Fulton On-Demand Zone. Current Route 143, Winward Park and Ride. Current Route 143 will be discontinued. Service in the vicinity of Georgia 400, Deerfield Parkway, Morris Road, and Winward Parkway will remain available on Proposed Routes 140 and 185. Service will be discontinued on Morris Road, north of Webb Road, the Guinness Ferry Road, Winward Concourse, and Winward Parkway, east of North Point Parkway. Current Route 148, Mount Vernon Highway. Current Route 148 will be discontinued. Service in the vicinity of Mount Vernon Highway and Roswell Road will remain available on Routes 5 and 87. Current Route 150, Dunwoody Village. Current Route 150 will be mostly assumed by Proposed Route 88. Service along Mount Vernon Road between Dunwoody Village Parkway and Tilly Mill Road will be discontinued. Current Route 153, James Jackson Parkway. Current Route 153 will be entirely assumed by Proposed Route 26. Current Route 155, Pittsburgh. Current Route 155 will be partially assumed by Route 7 on McDaniel Street and Ralph David Abernathy Boulevard, and 55 on Lakewood Avenue and Milton Avenue. Alternating trips along Lakewood Avenue, Polar Rock Avenue, Harper Road, and Swallow Circle will be served by the Lakewood On-Demand Zone. Proposed Route 162, Stanton Road, Allison Court. Proposed Route 162's alignment will remain unchanged and will continue to operate between Oakland City Station to Myrtle Drive along Campbellton Road, Stanton Road, Allison Court, Delo Drive, and Myrtle Drive. Proposed Route 162 will operate a typical frequency of every twenty minutes. Proposed Route 165, Fairburn Road, Camp Creek Parkway. Proposed Route 165 will operate between H.E. Holmes Station, Camp Creek Marketplace, and College Park Station. Buses will travel along Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, Fairburn Road, Mount Gilead Road, Greenbrier Parkway, Continental Colony Road, Greenbrier Parkway, Continental Colony Parkway, Stone Hogan Connector Road, Camp Creek Parkway, Redwine Road, and Frontage Road. This route will assume portions of Routes 66 and 93 on Continental Colony Parkway, as well as Route 66 on Fairburn Road and Route 82 on Camp Creek Parkway. Service along Barge Road will be discontinued. Proposed Route 165 will operate a typical frequency of every 30 minutes. Current Route 172, Sylvan Road, Virginia Avenue. Current Route 172 service along Sylvan Road will be mostly assumed by Proposed Route 79. Service along Virginia Avenue will be assumed by Route 96. Service will be discontinued on Sylvan Road between Glenway Road and Arthur B. Langford Jr. Parkway and on Langston Avenue. Proposed Route 178, Mount Zion Road. Proposed Route 178 will operate between Lakewood-Fort McPherson Station to Hamilton Boulevard. Buses will travel along Arthur B. Langford Jr. Parkway, I-85, Cleveland Avenue, Mount Zion Road, Ruby Harper Boulevard, and Southside Industrial Parkway, Zip Industrial Boulevard, and Browns Mill Road. This route will provide new service along Forest Hills Drive. Service along Old Hapeville Road, Macon Drive, and the surrounding community will be provided by the Lakewood On-Demand Zone. Service will be discontinued along Empire Boulevard, Hapeville Road, and small portions of Browns Mill Road. Proposed Route 178 will operate a typical frequency of every 30 minutes. Proposed Route 180, Roosevelt Highway. Proposed Route 180 will continue to operate between College Park Station and Union City along Roosevelt Highway, Camp Drive, and Beverly Ingram Parkway. Alternating trips will continue on to Palmetto along Roosevelt Highway. Route 180 will operate a typical frequency of every 30 minutes between College Park and Union City, while service continuing on to Palmetto will have a typical frequency of every 60 minutes. Current Route 181, Washington Road, Fairburn. Current Route 181 will be partially assumed by Routes 84 on Washington Road, 89 on Flat Shoals Parkway, Shannon Parkway, and Oakland Road, and 184 on Buffington Road. Route 180 will provide service on Roosevelt Highway and Beverly Ingram Parkway. Service on Buffington Road south of North Commerce Drive and Buffington Road north of South Fulton Parkway will be discontinued. Proposed Route 182, South Fulton Parkway. Proposed Route 182 will operate between College Park Station and Union City. Buses will travel along South Fulton Parkway, Campbellton-Fairburn Road, and Beverly Ingram Parkway. This route will assume portions of Route 82 along South Fulton Parkway, Derrick Industrial Parkway, and Route 181 on Beverly Ingram Parkway. Proposed Route 182 will operate a typical frequency of 60 minutes. Current Route 183, Greenbrier. Current Route 183 will be partially assumed by Route 80 on Greenbrier Parkway, Barge Road, and Campbellton Road. Service along County Line Road will be assumed by the County Line On-Demand Zone. Service along Arthur B. Langford Jr. Parkway will be discontinued. Proposed Route 184, Buffington Road. Proposed Route 184 will operate between College Park Station and Union City. Buses will travel along I-85, South Fulton Parkway, Buffington Road, and Jonesboro Road. This route will assume portions of Route 181 on Buffington Road and 89 on Jonesboro Road. Proposed Route 184 will operate a typical frequency of 30 minutes. Proposed Route 185, Alpharetta. Proposed Route 185 will operate between North Spring Station and the Winward Park and Ride. Buses will travel along Georgia 400, Holcomb Bridge Road, East Crossville Road, Mansell Road, and Alpharetta Highway. This route will assume portions of Route 141 along North Main Street and Winward Parkway, and Route 142 to the Kings Market Shopping Center. Service will be discontinued along Alpharetta Highway between Holcomb Bridge Road and Mansell Road, and along Old Milton Parkway between Main Street and North Point Parkway. Service will also be discontinued on Alexander Drive and Old Milton Parkway between Brookside Parkway and Park Bridge Parkway. Proposed Route 185 will operate a typical frequency of 40 minutes. Current Route 186, Rainbow Drive, South DeKalb. Current Route 186 will be entirely assumed by Proposed Route 20, except for the East Side Drive Loop, which will be assumed by Route 111. Proposed Route 187, Godby Road, Sullivan Road. Proposed Route 187 will operate from College Park Station in a loop along Roosevelt Highway, West Point Avenue, Best Road, Riverdale Road, Godby Road, Old National Highway, and Sullivan Road. This route will assume portions of Route 89 along West Point Avenue, Best Road, and Sullivan Road. Proposed Route 187 will operate a typical frequency of 20 minutes. Current Route 188, Oakley Industrial. Current Route 188 will be discontinued. Service in the vicinity of Oakley Industrial Boulevard, Bohannon Road, Fairburn Industrial Boulevard, and Sonoya Road will remain available through the Oakley Industrial On-Demand Zone. Proposed Route 189, Schofield Road, Creel Road. Proposed Route 189 will operate between College Park Station and Union City. Buses will travel along Roosevelt Highway, Old National Highway, Godby Road, Schofield Road, Old National Highway, Creel Road, Bethsade Road, and Jonesboro Road. Service on Flat Shoals Road will be provided by Proposed Route 89. Service will be discontinued along Old Farm Road, Cadiz Circle, and Royal South Parkway. Proposed Route 189 will operate a typical frequency of 60 minutes. Proposed Route 192, Old Dixie, Terra Boulevard. Proposed Route 192 will operate between East Point Station to H.R. Bank Justice Center. In East Point, buses assume portions of Route 79, and will travel along Washington Avenue, Randall Street, Holcomb Avenue, Calhoun Avenue, Norman Berry Drive to the Airport Loop Road. Service on R.N. Martin Street will be discontinued. Route 192's alignment in Clayton County will not change. Proposed Route 192 will operate a typical frequency of 60 minutes. Current Route 201, Six Flags Over Georgia. Current Route 201 will be discontinued. Service to Six Flags Over Georgia is available through Cobb Link Route 30. Current Route 221, Memorial Drive Limited. Current Route 221 will be discontinued. Service within the vicinity of Memorial Drive and East Ponce de Leon Avenue will be provided by Routes 117, 119, 120, and 121. Service on Juliette Road will be discontinued. Current Route 295, Metropolitan Campus Express. Current Route 295 will be discontinued. Service within the vicinity of Dill Avenue and Metropolitan Parkway will remain on Routes 79 and 95. Service to Atlanta Technical College and Atlanta Metro State College will be provided by Route 95 and the Lakewood On-Demand Zone. Current Route 809, Monroe Drive Boulevard. Current Route 809 will be mostly assumed by Proposed Route 7. Service along Monroe Drive between Piedmont Avenue and Piedmont Circle will be discontinued. Current Route 813, Atlanta University Center. Current Route 813 will be mostly assumed by Proposed Route 10 on Westview Drive, Fair Street, Atlanta Student Movement Boulevard, Northside Drive, Peters Street, and Forsyth Drive. Service will be discontinued on Decatur Street, Piedmont Avenue, Pratt Street, Jesse Hill Jr. Drive, Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, portions of Westview Drive, Mim Street, Laurel Avenue, and Wellington Street. Current Route 816, North Highland Avenue. Current Route 816 will be partially assumed by Proposed Routes 11 on North Highland Avenue and 51 on Ralph McGill Boulevard and Freedom Parkway. Proposed Route 49 will assume service on Cortlandt Street. Service will be discontinued on North Highland Avenue between Freedom Parkway and Virginia Avenue, Johnson Road, Briar Cliff Road, and Peachtree Center Avenue. Current Route 823, Belvedere. Current Route 823 will be discontinued. Service within the vicinity of Fairleigh Drive, Belvedere Lane, San Gabriel Avenue, and White Oak Drive will remain via the Candler-McAfee-Belvedere Park On-Demand Zone. Service on South McDonough Street, West Hill Street, East Lake Drive, and Hosea Williams Drive will be discontinued. Current Route 825, Johnson Ferry Road. Current Route 825 will be partially assumed by Proposed Route 48 along Johnson Ferry Road, Peachtree Boulevard, and Shambly Tucker Road. Service will be discontinued along Johnson Ferry Road between Ashford-Dunwoody Road and Medical Center Station. Current Route 832, Grant Park. Current Route 832 will be partially assumed by Proposed Route 7 on United Avenue and portions of Custer Avenue and Moreland Avenue. Service will be discontinued on Ralph David Abernathy Boulevard, Georgia Avenue, Cherokee Avenue, and Atlanta Avenue. Current Route 850, Carroll Heights, Fairburn Heights. Current Route 850 will be mostly assumed by Proposed Route 3 on Collier Drive, Fairburn Road, and Bolton Road. Service will be discontinued along Croft Place, Clovis Court, Mercury Drive, Donald Lee Hollowell Parkway, and Atlanta Industrial Parkway. Current Route 853, Center Hill. Current Route 853 will be partially assumed by Proposed Routes 2 on Donald Lee Hollowell Parkway, 3 on Harwell Road, Kingston Road, and Skipper Drive, 10 on Westlake Avenue, and 51 on Joseph E. Boone Boulevard. Service along Baker Road, North Avenue, Chapel Road, Holly Road, Easton Street, and Ezra Church Drive will be assumed by the West Atlanta On-Demand Zone. Current Route 856, Baker Hills, Wilson Mill Meadows. Current Route 856 will be partially assumed by Proposed Route 3 on Baker's Ferry Road. Service will be discontinued along Cornell Boulevard, Candlelight Lane, Waits Drive, and Terragon Way. Current Route 865, Boulder Park Drive. Current Route 865 will be partially assumed by Proposed Route 3 on Boulder Park Drive. Service will be discontinued along Boulder Park Drive between Nathan Road and Fairburn Road, as well as Plainville Drive, Plainville Circle, Wilson Mill Road, Dollar Mill Road, and Utoy Circle. Current Route 867, Peyton Forest, Dixie Hills. Current Route 867 will be partially assumed by Proposed Route 67 on Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, Harland Road, Peyton Road, and Peyton Place. The Dixie Hills and Florida Heights communities will be serviced by the West Atlanta On-Demand Zone. Current Route 899, Old Fourth Ward. Current Route 899 will be partially assumed by Proposed Routes 2 on North Avenue, 7 on Jackson Street and Decatur Street, and 51 on Ralph McGill Boulevard. Service on Glen Iris Drive and portions of Jackson Street will be discontinued but available nearby on Route 7 along Boulevard. Current Clayton County Routes 191, 193, 194, 195, 196, 197, 198, and 800 are unchanged by the Next Gen Bus Network redesign. On-Demand Zones. The following on-demand zones will provide demand-response service to destinations within a geographic zone. All zones will operate 18 hours a day, with most pickups occurring within 30 minutes. On-demand zones also offer connections to other nearby MARTA bus and rail services for continued travel. In this section, we'll describe each zone. Proposed Zone 301, West Atlanta. The proposed West Atlanta On-Demand Zone will provide demand-response service to an area in Fulton County that is approximately bounded by I-20, the Florida Heights community, Hamilton E. Holmes Drive, Donald Lee Hollowell Parkway, and Chapel Road. This zone provides connections to the Bankhead and Westlake rail stations. Proposed Zone 302, Kirkwood-Candler Park. The proposed Kirkwood-Candler Park On-Demand Zone will provide demand-response service to an area in DeKalb County that is approximately bounded by Moreland Avenue, Ponce de Leon Avenue, East Lake Road, Second Avenue, and Memorial Drive. This zone provides a connection to the Edgewood-Candler Park and East Lake rail stations. Proposed Zone 303, County Line. The proposed County Line On-Demand Zone will provide demand-response service to an area in Fulton County that is approximately bounded by Camp Creek Parkway, the general vicinity of Butner Road, Kimberly Road, Locklawman Trail, Niski Lake Road, County Line Road, and Cowart Lake. This zone provides a connection to the Barge Road Park and Ride. Proposed Zone 304, Lakewood. The proposed Lakewood On-Demand Zone will provide demand-response service to an area in Fulton County that is approximately bounded by Cleveland Avenue, Browns Mill Road, Jonesboro Road, University Avenue, and I-85, with service to Atlanta Technical College and Atlanta Metropolitan State College. This zone includes a connection to the Lakewood-Fort McPherson Rail Station. Proposed Zone 305, Oakley Industrial. The proposed Oakley On-Demand Zone will provide demand-response service to an area in South Fulton County that is approximately bounded by Georgia 138, Roosevelt Highway, Creekwood Road, and areas south of Oakley Industrial Boulevard. This zone includes a connection to bus routes in Union City. Proposed Zone 306, Fulton Industrial. The proposed Fulton Industrial On-Demand Zone will provide demand-response service to an area in Fulton County that is approximately bounded by Riverside Drive, Campbellton Road, New Hope Road, Elva Drive, Fulton Industrial Boulevard, and the Chattahoochee River. This zone includes a connection to bus routes near Fulton Industrial Boulevard and Boat Rock Road. Proposed Zone 307, East Point. The proposed East Point On-Demand Zone will provide demand-response service to an area in Fulton County that is approximately bounded by Main Street, Norman Berry Drive, Headland Drive, Greenbrier Parkway, Stone Hogan Connector, Stone Road, and Lyles Street. This zone includes connections to Greenbrier Mall and the East Point Rail Station. Proposed Zone 308, Hillendale. The proposed Hillendale On-Demand Zone will provide demand-response service to an area in DeKalb County that is approximately bounded by I-20, Panola Road, Benton Drive, Covington Highway, Arbor Crossing Drive, and DeKalb Medical Parkway. This zone will provide service to Alice Williams Towers and the Lou Walker Senior Center. This zone includes a connection to the Panola Park and Ride. Proposed Zone 309, Candler-McAfee-Belvedere Park. The proposed Candler-McAfee-Belvedere On-Demand Zone will provide a demand-response service to an area in DeKalb County that is approximately bounded by Second Avenue, Glenwood Road, Candler Road, Memorial Drive, Columbia Drive, and I-20. This zone includes a connection to bus routes near the gallery at South DeKalb. Proposed Zone 310, Cedar Grove. The proposed Cedar Grove On-Demand Zone will provide demand-response service to an area in South DeKalb County that is approximately bounded by Boulder Crest Road, Boulder Crest Park, the Southern DeKalb County Line, and I-675, I-285. This zone includes a connection to the gallery at South DeKalb. Proposed Zone 311, Gresham Park. The proposed Gresham Park On-Demand Zone will provide demand-response service to an area in South DeKalb County that is approximately bounded by I-20, Candler Road, I-285, and Boulder Crest Road. This zone includes a connection to other bus routes near the gallery at South DeKalb. Proposed Zone 312, North Fulton. The proposed North Fulton On-Demand Zone will provide demand-response service to an area in North Fulton County that is approximately bounded by Old Alabama Road, Mansell Road, Commerce Parkway, Holcomb Bridge Road, Big Creek, and Grimes Bridge Road. This zone includes a connection to the Mansell Road Park and Ride. This zone includes a connection to the Mansell Road Park and Ride.
All right. This concludes our video presentation. Hearing results will be presented to the MARTA Board's Planning and Capital Programs Committee on May 22, 2025. The Board will consider adoption of the proposed service modifications on June 12, 2025. This concludes the overview of proposed service modifications for the Next Gen Bus Network.
Thank you, Mr. Van Sickle. We will now receive comments from the public. Please come forward when your name is called. I will call the speakers in the order in which they registered. We do have a court reporter with us tonight who is making an official transcript, and your testimony will become part of the public record. We want everyone who wishes to do so to have the opportunity to speak, so each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. We do have a timer here, and we will give you notice when you have two minutes left and one minute left, and then when your time is up. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak but has not yet registered and filled out one of these blue cards, please raise your hand or go over to the table there on the side, and you may go ahead and sign up, and we can hear from you. I will let you know at the end if you have questions, you're not ready to ask it tonight. I am going to tell you at the end ways that you can submit questions through voicemail, email, and other -- that you can submit comments in other manners. So if you want to go sign up, you can go get a blue card over there. We are now going to move forward when I do call your name, if you'd come to the podium and the microphone here and state your name and your address. And if you are speaking on behalf of an organization, let us know what organization you represent. Individuals may appear and speak on their individual capacity, or if you are authorized by a local government, civic association, community club, and other business association. So our first speaker at this public hearing is Manuel Duran? Is that right? No, okay, I'm sorry. It's difficult to read up here with these bright lights. But if you would introduce yourself, please, and apologies for not getting your name right.
It's Manuel Duran. Duran, yes, how are you? Good afternoon. Let me just start with saying I'm Atlanta-born and raised. First time I've ever met a MARTA meeting. I've started using the bus recently because of a medical incident that I don't really like to drive. And long story short, I don't know what all of this is for, but my biggest gripe with MARTA is you treat us like second-class citizens, and it's very difficult. This bus redesign, I think, is a great opportunity for you to show and highlight your products for this city. It is incredibly hard, and I think this meeting is a perfect example of what you make us go through to just see one change or have a bus show up. A perfect example is I convinced my girlfriend to use the bus. She works downtown. Route 21, I live right off Memorial Drive. Westbound bus 21, it's supposed to leave Kensington Station at 8:20 in the morning. It wasn't until 8:51 a.m. that a MARTA service alert through Twitter canceled the route. These are certain examples that just constantly happen. And all I can say is you have the opportunity right now to just do better. All right? Just do better. That's all I'm going to say, and I yield the rest of my time, and thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Seth Perry, I believe.
Hi, my name is Seth Perry, and I've always rode MARTA all my life. So I live on the 867 route. Just saying, you know, like with the 867, the most problems that I've had with it is whenever I would try to get to the bus route on Harland and Peyton, sometimes I would miss the bus. And it's a struggle, actually, trying to get to the -- trying to wait for the bus sometimes, and even when it's hot outside, you know? And I want the 867 to, you know, how could I say? I actually wanted to, you know, to not just, you know, pass by, like if you see someone waving, when you tell them, like, hold the bus, they need to stop, instead of just, you know, hitting the accelerator. And I don't want that bus route to change, because I would take it to Westlake Station to try to get to Eastlake Station, or not Eastlake Station, go to Westlake, but get the eastbound train as much as possible. And even like with Route 3 as well, like whenever I would get Route 3, like I do not want Route 3 to, you know, change, because I would take that bus sometimes going to Five Points or going to the King Center. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is the Reverend Roy Griffin.
First of all, I concur with the previous speakers, but they're right with their saying. But I've been around MARTA since it was created back in 1972, before you even thought about having the trains and everything else. And see, some of the routes were good routes, but since the last few general managers have come in and out, even before we had this building, they don't seem to understand the people who live here. I mean, they keep cutting out routes, cutting out partnerships. A lot of us are getting older now, and we can't move like we used to. And one of the biggest things that's going on now is when you have the football designated areas for seniors and disability people, and younger people are sitting in those seats because the drivers don't make them get up. And we do need some consideration. And that's the only thing I mentioned, because I know I can't change all the others, but the number three route in particular has been my route since it came over from Atlanta Transit, when it was going all the way. But now you cut it back to where you got it like it is now, because at one point you had it at Candler Park Station, coming from Hot Topic Station. And now it's barely running. Ever since COVID came, a lot of these routes, the ridership has gone down, I don't know why, but it's gone down, and we waited almost two hours just to go where we're going, especially coming from downtown to go east, to go west. So that's some of the things. And there are other routes, like the 813, which used to be the 13, you're doing the same thing to those routes. And so they just said about the 67 and the 867 have been affected. And we just want some concerns about, we want to care about the people who can't ride anymore. Because, see, I was in my twenties when MARTA was started, and now I'm going to hit eighty. And I seem to, but yet still, my memories that go back when we had the 15-cent fare back in '72 for what you charge, and I heard rumors that you're going to increase the fare. But our incomes are not increasing. And I think all we need to know is somebody needs to be concerned about the baby boomers and after. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is the Reverend Thomas A. Mitchell.
Is there a timer that I can visibly see? Okay, that works. Thank you. My comments tonight are divided into two parts. I'll tell you first that I moved here from Boston three years ago and intentionally chose a transit-oriented development. I am incredibly disappointed to find out that the area that I chose to live in will lose half of its bus routes. It also loses the green line service every single weekend. I chose to live in a TOD. Right now, it's just a development. There's no real transit attached to it. I've not seen MARTA make any real efforts to encourage folks to utilize this service. It's incredibly frustrating and disappointing to see. The routes that I use most often are Routes 19 and Route Number 24. Again, both of those routes slated to be eliminated in this final plan. I want to focus tonight on the area in North DeKalb County. Routes 8, 30, 19, and 133 are all marked for elimination. This results in six churches, including my own, being taken off of transit service. It also removes four schools. What's interesting to me is that between the initial draft map and this final map plan, a new On-Demand Zone popped up in the Kirkwood-Edgewood Park area, which satisfies my need to getting into Kirkwood. Great, I appreciate that. Only two routes were eliminated in that area, and yet now there's an On-Demand Zone. For North DeKalb, again, you've knocked out four routes, six churches, four schools, hundreds of people who typically use these buses. There is no plan for an On-Demand Zone to pop up in that area. If you look at the map, whether it's the map way back there, if you put up a map here, there's a big gap that you can visibly now see with MARTA's bus service. And I think it's important to acknowledge, this is a choice that you all are making. I understand that it's a blank slate. I understand it may not be tied to revenue for this initial marking, but this is a choice that you all have made to eliminate churches, eliminate schools, eliminate, again, a minimum of four routes, and provide no other alternative to their service. The next part of my sort of remarks this evening are really tied to just this entire process about the network redesign. At the end of April, the streets are live. I saw about a dozen folks working for MARTA under a tent talking about the BRT system. Right? You got to spin a wheel, talk about the BRT. Great. It would be super awesome to have that same number of people at your train stations talking about this process. The idea that we have to come here and sit for almost three hours to tell you something is good or not good is almost laughable, and it's, again, incredibly frustrating. I could have done many other things with my evening tonight, but I chose to stay here and be here so that you could hear these remarks. And again, I encourage you all to allocate the same resources. Have folks at Decatur Station. Tell the veterans who ride Bus 19 that you are eliminating half of their route, that even with the realignment to 17, half of them can't get up to Shambley anymore without taking another ride. Have people at that station, tell them what's going on. You need to put resources on the ground. This event is great, but the folks who need to be here are not going to be here. They don't have the time, the energy, the funds. Please be at your stations, do the same process out and about with folks on the street. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker, and I hope I'm getting your last name right, Todd Prusen.
Hello, thanks for the opportunity. I'm also an Atlantan for pretty much all my life. I've been riding the bus for over 30 years. I'm commenting about the Number 30, and I am addressing the next-generation redesign. I take Bus Number 30 to work by choice as often as I can to keep my car off the road. You may have heard about Atlanta traffic. If not, we'll have another three-hour meeting to talk about that. Every time I ride the bus to work or to Lindbergh, because the Number 30 terminates here to get to wherever I go, I see people with clothes that say Burger King, McDonald's, Publix, Kroger, fast food, independent businesses on La Vista. There's a small taqueria whose employees arrive by MARTA. How will they get to work? How will the taqueria stay in business? There are synagogues along La Vista. I call it the Jewish section. I'm Jewish, I can say that, but it is the Jewish section. And a lot of people on Friday afternoon take the bus to that area of town so they can tend synagogue, because they can't drive on Shabbos, Shabbat, and then they get a ride home Saturday afternoon. I don't know how they're going to do that. There are other houses of worship. The two reverends in front of me mentioned the houses of worship that are being affected. Small businesses and mega chains will struggle to survive. I told Mr. Van Sickle and Ms. Duana Brown that that's not your responsibility to get us around. I changed that. It is your responsibility to get us around. And what I haven't heard tonight is why all of this is happening. Is it a foregone conclusion? Have we just spent up to three hours, as the reverend just said in front of me, to pretty much just waste someone's time, specifically my own? By taking the bus to work, I am able to keep my car off the road. I mentioned Atlanta traffic earlier. It also allows my daughter to spend the night with me, because she can take my car to school, because I can take the bus to work. Atlanta is often criticized as not being a real city. I can go on and on about that. I got one minute left. With a lacking public transportation system, I'm afraid that that claim is accurate. I moved to my neighborhood because I have bus transportation to get to work in Lindbergh. If you take my bus away, the Number 30, I'm in deep, deep trouble. I may have to seek reemployment. And in case you haven't heard, we have a very horrible employment situation in Atlanta right now with healthcare professionals being kicked to the curb. I strongly encourage you to reconsider the elimination of Number 30. Without it, many people, including myself, are going to struggle just to get around, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, stockholders, investors, members of the board, and our concerned attendees who've spoken very eloquently about this situation. I am a regular passenger on Route 58 that is being proposed to be eliminated. I am very disturbed that I'm here again because, defending Lucille Ralph David Abernathy, because your records would show years back, it used to be the 67. And we all know that it's between two major train stations, West End, which is the red and gold line, Westlake, the blue and green line. So therefore, you're telling our elders, because there are elders who use this to go to services, health services, people like myself, this is my only means of transportation, because I don't have a car to just jump into and come out. I have to use it. You have students at Kip Academy who may use this as well. To take their big strip away is saying we're not looking at the bigger picture. To discontinue the service will present major travel issues, and as I've already stated, and this is something that I know you all don't want for the community. We, the people, use your service seven days a week, not just for sports and entertainment. We, the passengers, request that the route schedulers team reevaluate, review the need for Route 58. You are asking passengers to walk, possibly from 71, to walk from the train stations. Then they are elders with canes, walkers, they are people like me who are getting older, thank you, that have to use our legs and limbs to keep moving around. You have people like we always spoke about, the pastors, the synagogues, and the Islamic community who use it to go to prayer, worship. We need MARTA, as MARTA needs the passengers, who keep you going regularly, not just for sports events, for ongoing service. Proposal is put forward an idea or plan for consideration, discussion, not this is what we're going to do, follow our lead. That is not what MARTA is about. It wasn't started that way, and I know you don't want to continue that way. Thank you very much for listening to all of us. Have a good day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ian Samuels.
Hello. First time doing this, so a little nervous. So I like the plan. I think it is a benefit generally for the metro area to have more frequent buses. But one of my concerns I wanted to mention, I'm someone who's been following this plan for a long time, and I noticed on one of the posters that you all had released, and it's still on the website for the bus network redesign, it said that the community review period was between May 5 and May 20. However, the final bus map and plan was not posted to the website until May 9. So that was four, that was five business days where this plan wasn't available, but I still see the deadline for public comment is May 20. So I hope that is something So I hope that is something you all can consider pushing back to give people time, because this is a serious change, and I think people have some very serious concerns that need to be heard, and I'm sure you all want to hear those and hopefully implement those. Moving on from that, it's difficult to ride the bus. It's very difficult. It's been difficult for the last few years, especially since COVID. Frequencies have been down. The quality of service has been very low at many times, even now. I hope as you're doing the scheduling for these new routes, that you consider that your buses sometimes don't leave on time. Sometimes it says the bus is supposed to leave at 5 o'clock, and it leaves at 5:10, and no one can explain that. It just happens. And I hope that you pad those schedules more and allow for more time. So if your employees need to take a break, they have more time to take a break. If there's delay, there's more time for your employees to react to that and actually leave on time, because that's something MARTA has struggled with. And one thing that really annoys me is the technology for the buses. For some reason, 60% of your buses have their trackers on. This is just random figures, but you open the MARTA app, and sometimes you look at a route, especially the ones that run like every hour, every 45 minutes, and it's blank, because none of your buses are being tracked. It could be one bus, two buses, even when you go on a busier route like the Number 5. There's just missing buses. I don't understand why that's the case in 2025, but that's something you need to look at, because if your bus is late, sometimes buses do get late for a legitimate reason, but if we don't know where it is, then how are we supposed to get on it? At this point in 2025, I don't know how it was back in the day. I know there was a time when there was no tracking, but it's 2025, and I don't think people should be waiting out in the sun or rain or snow for 30 minutes because their bus is late. They should be able to be inside, not waiting for MARTA's services if it's not coming on time. So those are my recommendations, and thank you for listening to them.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott Dorsey.
All right, good evening. I've had a chance to actually talk to some of the staff here, some of the actual MARTA staff who are helping to assemble the redesign of the bus network. And I want to say thank you for the efforts to make public transit and bus transit better in Atlanta. But I will say that after review of the proposals, I feel that many of the changes appear to many to be very punitive in that services are being reduced or eliminated in many areas. And in some cases, the on-demand zones are being created. I think that's going to be a very difficult selling point to a lot of people who currently ride existing routes that are being eliminated. How do I engage it? When do I engage it? How often do I have to engage it? We haven't really heard much about the on-demand process, so it would be nice to learn more about that. Next, I want to actually comment on a few of the bus routes that are being proposed. For Route 23, that's kind of the heart of Atlanta. Runs down Peachtree from Brookhaven to Art Center. I would like to ask MARTA, in addition to extending it to the north, to Shambly, also consider extending it south in lieu of Route 40 being discontinued from Five Point, or actually from West End, but extend the bus southward as well to the Civic Center Station to cover all of the entertainment, restaurants, and residential areas along Peachtree between Art Center and the Civic Center Station. That's really the heartbeat of Atlanta. Next, I'd like to talk about Route 19, which is kind of my route when I ride MARTA buses from Shambly to Decatur. I don't know how you decide which routes get cut and how they get chopped up, but Route 19 is actually kind of the artery going from North DeKalb to Decatur. And many people ride it starting in North Decatur and ending their trips in Downtown Decatur. So to cancel an entire straight shot from north to south seems counterproductive and somewhat punitive for the riders who are going to need to make adjustments when riding the bus. So I would recommend for Route 17, rather than having it go to North, having it go to Lennox Station, continue running Route 19. So reinstate Route 19 from Decatur to Shambly, and then also reinstate Route 8. That's another route where you have people on opposite ends that use that bus to get from one end to the next. Finally, I would like to say that Route 52, that's just been proposed along Marietta Street, reroute it to go instead of Bankhead Station, reroute it over to North Avenue Station through the Georgia Tech campus and pick up riders along the Marietta Street Entertainment District. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak who has not spoken? All right, well, thank you so much. If there are no others in attendance who wish to speak, I would like to note that you may submit comments no later than May 20, 2025, and be assured that MARTA is interested in your comments. There are several ways that you can still share your opinions and views and input with us. You may provide oral comments about the proposed bus service modifications by calling 404-848-5299 and leaving a voicemail message. Again, that is 404-848-5299. You may also send us comments via email, and the email address is That's all run together, publichearinginfo@itsmarta.com. You can always be old-school and send us written comments by U.S. Mail to marta@externalaffairs2424 Piedmont Road, Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia, 30324. Again, that's marta@externalaffairs2424 Piedmont Road, Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia, 30324. If you want to share this information with your friends, if this was of, you think of interest to people you work with, your neighbors, your family members, all of this information is online on the MARTA website, which is itsmarta.com, I-T-S-M-A-R-T-A dot com. That has the overview of the proposed bus service adjustments, the routing, and the maps, all on the website. In addition, physical copies of the proposed bus service changes, routing, and maps are available for public viewing here at the headquarters at 2424 Piedmont Road until May 20, 2025. I would like to close by noting that we had 26 members of the public present tonight, and eight made comments. There were no media representatives here, and there were 10 MARTA board members and staff present. Thank you so much for your participation at this public hearing. We just now adjourned. Everybody have a good night and get home safely. Thank you.